Okay, meeting's called to order, or so board of selectmen's meeting is called to order as seven oh three. And all of our selectmen are here, thank you. Hear from public? Nothing from the public? Acceptance of the minutes of the regular meetings of twelve eighteen. Uh, we'll start with that one of December eighteen. Uh, do we have, have somebody looked at the minutes?
Yep.
I will move the acceptance of the minutes of uh twelve eighteen is presented.
I'll second.
And um, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. And the minutes, minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
But I'll move to accept.
And I will second that.
Uh, any corrections or anything? Good. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And a special meeting of December twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, if I recall, that was our meeting. Uh, what did we do? We reviewed, reviewed the uh plan for the town uh school roof. That was the school building committee, school building committee that we had come to our meeting.
I will move those as presented.
Certainly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I assume that's unanimous, thank you. And the uh meeting of December eleventh.
That's going backwards.
Yeah, I can't remember. I'll move the minutes as presented.
I don't think that should be December. I like that it should be February. Not February. Is it February?
No, it's not February.
Wouldn't be February, it'd be January or December.
Um, that January eleventh, probably January eleventh. And let me just, I'll do a quick, quick check.
Do we want to pass on that and put it on our next agenda?
If you wanted to take a peek just to refresh your memory, if I can get to it. That's December the eleventh. I'm going to look right out here on the website. We had a meeting January sixteenth. No, not the eleventh. And that one.
Right, you're already through January sixteenth. You did have a meeting December eleventh.
That sounds.
That was just to set the special town meeting table.
Okay.
The first special town meeting day.
Yes. Well, I think those are probably fine. I'm just gonna pull them up here real quick. Oh, you can see them. Good. And then you can see this, nine, noon. Okay, there we go.
Well, eleven. There it is.
The special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we'd be okay.
Reiterate my motion.
But.
Pass it for uh December eleventh.
Yeah, actually, it's just to approve these minutes.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have a motion to approve them?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion approved. Uh, here from boards, commissions, committees, do we have anything? Okay. Old Business Ashford School Roof Replacements Projects Update.
Could, could we go back to that? Could I ask Paul a question about the fire department?
About the what?
Fire department roof. And to hear from boards.
That's a board? Um.
It used to say departments in there too, didn't it?
It used to, yeah.
I just saw boards, commissions.
Yeah, no, no, I'm actually just thinking about, I think it used to say departments as well, but it's up to.
My only question is, is the roof stopped leaking?
Um, when it's not raining.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So.
Makes me feel. Yeah, we're, we're working on it, Bill. Um, I know you just, you said you discussed.
I'm actually, I'm probably gonna say something about it in the second.
Okay, also, yeah.
And we can.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, again, on the Ashford School Roof Replacements Projects Update, let's see, our RFP is out there for the clerk of the works. And I cannot remember the date they have to get back to us.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Twelve.
And that is the latest on that.
And just to review, when the responses come in on that, they're going to review them and then make recommendations to our board?
Yes.
And we'll do the hiring?
Yes, we do the hiring.
Okay.
But what we have is uh people who actually are closer to the project that are doing the interviewing.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay.
Did we ever get a copy of the plans?
Not yet.
They had promised us.
What's gonna happen is Tom is going to, the uh architect is going to pick up the plans. They're completely signed. The uh project book is signed and the cover thing is signed by all of the people who needed to sign it.
Okay.
And uh it is locked up in the selectman's office.
Okay.
And Tom is coming by, he thinks on Wednesday, I think, to pick it up, at which po, at which time, we're gonna reiterate that we need a set of the plans, and hopefully book, I would love to see that, for the selectman's office, but also for the um.
Building department.
Presending. So that there are, we at least have one here and one there, and then they're working with whatever they're working with.
And will there also be one with the building department? I would assume.
Hadn't thought of that, but we can ask for that.
They should have one.
Yeah, they should have a set of plans because they do the inspection.
Yeah, they need the plan, a full set of plans, they need the books. And I agree with you, we should have the book here too.
Yeah. You know, since they're already signed, we can make a copy of the book, the book before it even comes.
Depends how thick it is.
I said we, that's a royal.
It's a royal.
So sorry. Uh, anything else on the school roof? The ACE equipment, the Discuss and Act on the ACE Equipment Logging Requests: Accessing the Cattle Rock Property. That's an interesting one to kind of research. So what I'm gonna do is, uh, give me a second here. I spoke with, what, what we got? I believe in um what we received was something from the Inland Wetlands Agent, Bruce Spitzback. And he sent a note that said, concerning this timber harvest for the ACE equipment property, I, I'm going to assume you're all familiar with what that is.
Mm-hmm.
All right, he said that this project has agent approval. However, it says, recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, the information for the timber harvest contains typical information. The Board may want to consider requesting additional information be added to the timber harvest description detailing the final condition of the town-owned property. The proposed access trail, shown on the map, provided uh contains areas with steep slopes that may be prone to stormwater washouts and scouring. A detailed narrative should be added to the proposal describing the creation of the access trail, stormwater control while in use, and methods used to close out the access trail and landing area. Require an estimate for the town property closeout resulting in the final condition of the property. In other words, how, what state do we want it left in? A cash bond, bond in that amount should be paid at the signing of the lease agreement. This project should be overseen by a state-certified forester through the enti, its entirety. This is the recommendation of the state forester. The notification of timber harvest should be referenced in the lease agreement. I'll tell you, my thinking is, there's some more homework that has to be done on this to get, we need to get this kind of information together. If in fact, we're going to allow someone to cut through Cattle Rock for this timber harvest.
Um, I agree, my, my suggestion would be, if there is information, perhaps Bruce can help us obtain
So what I.
What he's recommending, but.
Yeah.
Allen and Sage drew up the agreement that I would not sign.
So I hear.
Till we have everybody signed off on it. They had signed it, with John Patton and the, and.
All right, so what I did was I reached out to um Lenny LaGore, the head of Inland Wetlands. And to, as a courtesy, to say, I'd like to talk with Bruce Spitz, Spitzback about the Carosi Road Timber Harvest. And he said, he has followed up with an email to me saying, he, actually he spoke with Bruce. He asked him to give me a call instead of a meeting in my office to go over the permit and letter that I referred to. He will bring along some maps to help identify the location. And I asked him to come up with a bond amount to be posted by the contractor before work is commenced. And a paragraph stating what the con, what condition the town's property should be in upon completion of the work. I also suggested that a timeframe be established as to when the work is likely to be started and completed. Um, so I've done the reach out, Bruce is gonna come and see me. If I can understand, if it's laid out clearly, I can bring that information to you. If I feel that I can't do a good enough job, I'm gonna have him come in and speak at our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the aerial survey and I mean, it looks like he's, would have to penetrate two stone walls.
Yes.
Uh, the lane itself is bordered by stone walls on both sides.
Yeah, and I have a, I have a map.
Yeah.
There it is. I have a, we're gonna send it out.
And I believe Bruce's comment about restoration is very important too. And who's gonna judge that?
You know, I was thinking, Bill, when before, when we were thinking that, hey, yeah, this looks pretty good, kind of thing. And I'm glad you didn't sign the contract.
Yeah.
The um, the dates for them starting their work were like November, December through December, January.
You want.
Just imagine, with all this rain and everything, if they had been going through there without us having the proper things in place.
Well, the first proposal was, they were gonna use the existing road. And that's what Bruce had a real problem with, when he first looked at it.
So now they're talking about cutting.
This is, uh, the area they're proposing now is sort of set aside from that existing road because of the indentations. It would have been a real nightmare for one of the reasons you're just citing, especially looking ahead, looking behind ourselves, twenty twenty's always better, but it would have been flooded out before we even started.
I can't even imagine the amount of damage.
I mean, when he originally came to us, he then started talking about September, but originally he was saying he didn't want to get in there till November
Right.
And December, when the ground was frozen, to avoid that sort of, you know, stuff. The alternative he gave us was to come up with what they're calling now a trail. So they're gonna blame, blaze their own little road back there. And it's important that they restore it to the way they find it, particularly if there are stone walls and things involved.
So.
Whatever.
No matter what, I still have a concern because of the roads, uh, bear with me. I, I'm concerned about, certainly about Cattle Rock property, but I'm also concerned about the Carosi Road and, like, a Carosi Road in particular. Because what's gonna happen is these big logging trucks are gonna go through a very small neighborhood. You know, they're gonna go by a historical, a historic graveyard.
Yeah.
Cemetery, this is small. And the area in there taking big logging trucks through, that was my first concern, was the safety of the people that live there. And I'm sure there's some kids there.
Have you had a chance to read the agreement that, that Duncan had drawn up? Cause that was addressed, yes, somewhat in, in that agreement, but I think we oughta, we oughta emphasize that, because there was limitations.
The agreement.
Okay, there were, there were limitations on timing, number of daily trips.
Okay.
I mean.
And we talked about some.
We had.
Yeah, yeah, he was talking, like, there would only be like one or two trucks going out a, a day.
Right.
Was what he was.
But I, I think that needs to be documented and signed off on.
So what I, I'd like to do is get more information for Bruce Spitzback.
Yeah.
Make sure we've got something laid out. Uh, and, you know, this also says that we should have a certified, state-certified forester through the entirety of this. How do you get one of those?
And Ace, Ace had got one already that, if I recall, Bruce was unhappy with.
I would say that we should be choosing the forester, not the client.
Like the P and Z can do on projects and developments. They can choose the forester, they have to pay, the proponent has to pay for.
The, the person who, who was applying to this.
Exactly, so my suggestion would be with Bruce, let him give us a, a names of two or three of them.
Right.
Um, I will tell you an FYI, I used to informally, maybe twice a month, or three, some of it was a rare occasion, three times a month. Bruce and I would get together late hours on, on Fridays, cause he happened to be here late. And just go over what he was working on.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I found it very informative and, and him happy to do it. He started it, he I mean, I'd over up to the office four or five or something like that.
Okay.
And we just talked for fifteen or twenty minutes.
Good.
Um, but I also thought it was, it was helpful, at least looking at it from our end of it, to know what's going on regarding his, his position in that.
Yeah, I. And I've asked the same thing of, it's interesting, of the uh people that work in the building department.
Yeah.
I need to be able to be in touch with what they're doing.
Yeah.
Um, not because I need to be interfering, but it's just to understand what they're doing, because people ask questions.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, good advice. All right, so we're gonna wait on this, we're gonna make sure we have all of the popular.
Yeah, he, he wanted to get in there, given the weather we're having, he couldn't been in there anyway.
Yep.
Right.
Again, this isn't like the, you know, what they were doing up on Pumpkin Hill or somewhere else, it's not.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a large site either.
Okay. Oh, I never did the first selectmen's briefing, I'm sorry, I skipped it. All right, we're gonna go back up to item number four, I thought I was missing something. Okay, a couple of things. Since we are talking a bit right now about Cattle Rock, I did hear that uh some very industrious beavers have been working in there. There are two beaver dams. One is smaller, and the other one is wide or whatever. Anyway, it crosses, it makes the road flood. I'm trying to remember which road.
Giant Oak or uh Carosi?
No, it is. It is Upton Road. Which is even worse because Upton's a dirt road.
Much more used also.
Yeah, the water's going over Upton Road. So if I understand, they would.
No, it can't.
He told me it did.
Yeah.
Cattle doesn't.
Doesn't border.
The water of the road.
No, but the, the dams are on Cattle.
But the water's back.
So the water's going through Gillikens.
Yeah, he, that's exactly what he said.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, he said, uh, Joe Lamont's old property.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And the water is also killing the timber. Too much water.
That's what they do.
That's the business.
The business. Lynn, Linda and I had some very industrious beavers this past summer that we couldn't believe.
He said something about up behind you too.
Yeah, yeah, and uh, our water levels are higher than we've, well, I can't say we've ever seen them, but close to it.
So um, if I understand correctly, we cannot relocate beavers, we have to.
Deep.
Kill them.
Pretty much, I mean, that's what we're having, that's what we're having to do with the beavers at the, the club.
Yeah.
On South Road. Uh, we, we have a trapper who comes in.
There, there, there are a couple of trappers here in town.
Yeah.
That will trap them. Um, I had a problem up at exit sixty-nine years and years ago. Because I found out that Deep was having a beaver problem in Vernon. And they were relocating him to here. So I had a meeting with the commissioner at the time, and wherever they moved up the road, they, they moved them out of that area, because they dumped off, I, I heard, like a dozen beavers.
They moved them to Bigelow Hollow.
Is that where they moved?
Yes.
I sent on the map.
Gerald had a problem in Union.
So they're just moving the problem to another location?
I, as long as they weren't flooding our lands, I, you know.
So we have some trappers in town?
We do, yeah.
Um, is this something that we want?
Armin Barrett?
Armin Barrett.
Who else is still doing that trips?
Got a member at the club of traps.
Maybe you've been, they're, they're becoming a rarity.
The trappers are, yeah, the beavers are winning.
The beavers aren't, they're not a rarity by any means.
Okay, um, so, uh, we'd like to pursue this, uh, get some information.
Right.
Uh, do we need to, we'll probably need to do some kind of a write-up if we're gonna have somebody go in there uh, in terms of what they're able to do, what we're asking them to do, and what they're able to do within that property?
Um, yeah, trap, trap beavers. They won't do much more than that.
As a good student, don't, don't expand on trapping beavers.
No, I just, so I just.
Uh, address the beaver issue.
Trapping the beavers.
Yeah, I wouldn't get too specific.
No. Um.
They, they took two beavers out of our backyard. One of them was seventy-five pounds, the other was seventy.
Seventy-five pounds is bigger than a beaver.
Oh, it was huge. That was back when Armin did it several years ago.
We got the.
Can I tell a funny story?
Sure.
You may, because we need a laugh. So the fire department ambulance was on Speedway Wyndham Hospital, and they got down by the church farm. And there was beaver in the road, so of course the ambulance stops, Paul gets out and shews the beaver off the road. Ambulance comes back, beaver's not there anymore. I get a phone call from a woman who said she was down by the church farm and she picked up a platypus and put it in her Jeep. And it wouldn't let her in her Jeep.
She actually thinks they're going.
Platypus.
Now, you do realize, I believe platypus, platypus are extinct.
Well, they're, no, they're, they're in Australia.
They're just not here, oh, they are still, I thought they were extinct.
Finally was able to, how the hell did she, oh, Danny and Timmy Armitage went down. Managed to find the beaver into a cage, it was the nastiest beaver in the world, huge.
Oh, you've caught any animal.
But how did you get them in? That's what I.
So, that was the platypus's turn.
Okay.
But yeah, I would I'll, I could try to call Armin and ask him to get in touch with you if you'd like.
Unless you're already in touch.
I'll, I'll, yeah.
Well, Armin is a member, right?
Uh, what's, what's name again?
Armin.
Barrett.
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 Okay.
He lives on Waterfall Road.
Okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I will ask, and I've also asked.
I think he's a member.
Yeah, we've got.
If not, I have his phone, I was like.
I got Beaver Chilling Friday night.
Okay.
Oh, it's on the menu?
Yeah.
Um, another thing that's happening is they're replacing bridge number zero zero eight four eight, Route eighty-nine over Interstate eighty-four. So that's at exit sixty, seventy.
Sorry.
And uh, I'll be putting.
Yeah.
And, and Paul attended the meeting with them. And uh, they're going to have a, on Wednesday, March thirtieth, thirteenth, I'm sorry, they're going to have a live stream YouTube um, meeting for the two towns in particular that are affected, which is Union and Ashford. And uh, I'll be putting something in the Ashford Citizen about that, so our citizen, we can participate or listen in, and also out on the town website.
Good.
Okay, and, you know, Paul, they, they did, did you read their minutes, Paul?
I did.
They were really good. They were very accurate. Paul asked some great questions. He'd like the helicopter to be able to land, land over there.
I made requests, they didn't know what to do.
Yeah, but the thing is, they didn't just drop it either.
No, they put it in there, which is good. So I, I actually thought that, that, I can't take credit for the idea, but I thought of, like, why, when they do these projects, why don't we discuss these things, you know? Like Tom, just have another incident where they shut down the interstate with a helicopter there.
Oh, did they?
And they have an enormous spot.
It is at sixty-eight, why don't we do something with that instead?
So if I start here today, or tonight, we saw, it looked like flying down forty-four.
Wasn't for me.
Just before the six thirty minute.
It's been a popper today, I don't know if that was involved in the effort.
All right, so on um, Saturday, the selectmen met for a working session. And we reviewed what has been submitted for the general government budget. We also took a look at some of the capital improvement, uh, requests uh, to understand them. And uh, that was our first review of the budget. We'll be uh issuing uh full budget books uh, for the selectmen in particular, so they have all the background information that the different departments have provided. The uh.
They also use the issue for the Board of Finances, are gonna be the case too?
We do that, I'm sorry. We, we create budget books for the Board of Finance. I don't remember that, it was yours too.
We used to.
Oh, maybe I do remember.
Long time ago.
Uh, we can certainly.
I think we ended up with, what was it, thirteen books or twelve?
We can, we can certainly do that, um, because the point is to make sure they have the information that.
You know, it, it's just helpful that we're all looking at the same stuff.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I have the grand list information, I don't know if you got it through email yet, but I have printed, printed out. And I'm just gonna tell you, these, the numbers are teeny. So, and I'm sorry I did not issue, this is how they came to me.
Need a magnifying glass.
So, we should have issued that with them.
How weekly am I making a fine glass for me?
Well, we did not go very, up very much in the.
Better, better than buying Bible.
So if we thought the grand list was gonna save us, no, they're not. Uh, let's see.
But it did go in the right direction.
Yes, it at least went up. The uh boiler at the uh Norton Hall is, in essence, it's worse than we thought. I went over there today. I wanted to show someone what the Norton Hall, the Grand Hall looks like, because they're gonna have a party there on Sunday, so they had never seen it, so I took them over there. And when I walked in, I was hit with the fumes. I mean, it was worse than it was two weeks ago when I went down in the elevator and smelled it. Sorry?
What time was it, mid-morning or?
Let me think about that for a second.
It's nine, ten o'clock.
It's probably closer to noon.
Nine, ten o'clock seems the worst when I was going over there.
It's um, those uh gaskets, there needs to be something done. So I talked to Casey tonight, he came in. And just said, whatever you can figure out, because the reality is, is that in order to do the proper repair, what we've heard so far from Nutmeg, I guess it was.
Yeah.
Was um, it's a big job. I think they quoted like three thousand, which doesn't sound like a huge job.
They originally quoted that, and then all of a sudden they started saying that they couldn't do that, it was too big a job. And they were gonna get back to, I think we started with Joe, but, and give us some other companies that did that sort of work. I don't know if that ever, it never came in.
Okay. And I did want to touch base. I'm walking in the building, I can almost smell and taste that. It's um, just really nasty, and I've gotten complaints from inside of three or four people, the yoga class, except.
The fire department did go over there when this.
Yeah, we went up there.
And they did air quality tests, and they were healthy. I mean, the limits.
No carbon dioxide, just smell.
Yeah, there's no CO.
And there's no O L.
Cause that was my first concern.
Good.
If we had CO there, we'd close down.
Right.
It wasn't that, but they're noxious fumes.
So what we are doing, uh, certainly with one group, the yoga group, um, we offer them this room for their yoga classes temporarily. We'll see if they take us up on it. Uh, someone else mentioned, I forget who it was, maybe putting in some kind of a fan that takes the exhaust out of.
Is there a window in the basements?
Sorry?
I just asked them.
I'm trying to think, if there's a window in the basement, I think there is one small window, if I remember right.
I didn't know if it would help or if it would let too much cold into the basement.
That's the other problem, it's like, what, what are you doing? What's the, what do they say the problem is?
It's uh, the gaskets.
There's ga, all the main gaskets on the.
There are bolts that hold everything, and then there are gaskets in the.
And they gotta take that whole thing apart, the other thing, it would take two months.
They've tried to cough on, and use other sealants as it works, so it's beyond that band-aided.
Trying to think, when, I mean, when we were.
But they're saying they're gonna have to break the whole boiler down and regasket the whole thing and everything.
And that's why we'll get another opinion.
Well, yeah, not only that, I mean, how old is the boiler, like, what, what are we talking about?
Anybody know?
Uh, they're old, they last a long time.
Bill, do you remember the octopus?
Yeah.
That was down there.
Yeah. Yeah.
They put the octopus out and put the boiler in. So that had to be. Early ninety, very early nineties.
I, I would. I'm, I'm thinking eighty-nine.
Maybe.
Somewhere between eighty-seven and eighty-nine. But.
So it's not that old, really, in all honesty, truly not for boiler.
Well, what's recommended is that we wait till spring because you have to shut down the heat for two months.
Well, that's what I, when I talk to them, that's why we defer doing it.
I'm just wondering why it's all, I mean, I know it's been a problem, like you said, we were over there, but, um.
It's worse.
You have one woman, I, I know she used to be in the yoga class, I'm assuming, but is very, very sensitive to that.
Well, that, that, it, it's, it, it smells bad, it really does, when it, you know, that, that smell is very, it's.
Um, those, those kinds of smells actually trigger migraines for me. You know, only because they're so, uh. They have so much, they've got chemicals in them.
Yeah, yeah.
They say if you can smell something, you're ingesting it. So. Not good, so I thought I'd let you know that, we're trying to work on that one.
I would suggest, maybe Chris, you can talk to the one, the owner, what's his name, about that?
Steve.
Steve. Because he was the one that was gonna send us alternative companies to do that.
Or the owner of, uh, Nutmeg?
Nutmeg, cause I was upset, they originally gave us a price and we were assuming they were gonna do it, and when the time came to try to. Settle on and get a scope of work and everything, they said, it's too big for us, we can't do it.
Bigger than now, okay. Okay. All right, another thing that, uh, we got was that the Economic Development Committee. Completed their, um, assessment, uh, of businesses that could receive ARPA funds for our business, the fifty thousand that we set aside for them. They did a very, I think a very good job of. In their, um, assessment. And how they went about it. Yep, so I'm gonna read some of this. For the record. Uh, mailing was sent to two hundred and eighteen Ashford businesses, providing details of the program, eligibility requirements, and application for submission. As approved by First Selectman Bill Falletti. The board of selectmen also posted notification, the Ashford Citizen, in November and December issues. On November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, an information ses- session with EDC representatives. Was offered in the town hall to answer any further questions not covered in the mailing. Applications required, were required to be in the first selectman's office by two thirty, December eighth, or postmarked by that date. The mailing resulted in eighteen applications received and determined to be eligible Ashford businesses. A subcommittee of four EDC commissioners met on January tenth for four hours to review and allocate the fifty thousand available under the program. No member of this subcommittee had any advanced access to the individual applications or supporting documentation. A review sheet had been created for each business that required a numeric, the, um, for each business. And the sheet required a numerical value for completeness and demonstrated need. The maximum total value you could get was thirteen. Three points were given for in- indicative information and ten for demonstrated need. And there's a copy. Attached there. Then it said the in- application were reviewed independently and scored by each member, therefore resulting in four scores per business. These scores were then averaged, producing a range of seven to twelve. Scores were grouped in three levels, ten to twelve were allocated the highest values, eight to nine, next highest, and seven was lowest. While there were varying levels of need, in the opinion of the subcommittee, no submission was to seem to, was deemed to be unaffected by the pandemic. Therefore, it is recommended that every submission receive funds. And then the allocation of, uh, funds is, uh, the third page in here. I typed this up, what they gave me was their entire box.
You typed this up?
I typed that up.
Nice.
Thank you. The folders were in the box with the initials of the people who did the review. The score was on there and the amount was on there, they just didn't have a cover sheet that said what all of them were, so I put them on here. And. The, uh, let's see. At our request, town departments have been following up regarding these companies in good standing status, and we turn this review and finalization of the awards over to the selectmen. Our commissioners have treated this project with strict confidence and have not, nor will share the names of the businesses who applied. Please let us know if we can help further. Thank you for this opportunity to support Ashford businesses in a time of need, and this is from Margaret Chady, acting chair of the Ashford Economic Development Commission. So I looked through their process. And I was pretty impressed with how they went about it, it was very professionally done. They preserved all of the materials. And notes, you are more than welcome to go through them, they're in a box in the selectman's office. Um, but I also, you know, some, for my own personal view. I'm loathe to go in. As a selectman and change these amounts or allocations or whatever you wanna call it. Because the people who actually work with those businesses and know them and evaluated them. Are, they're, they provided, they're an advisory committee to our board.
Yeah.
So from my perspective, I think they did a great job. And, uh, it looks like they, uh, really, they, I know they took it very seriously. And they, they know it means something to these businesses. So I didn't know if you want to add something to the. Um. Board's agenda tonight. To move ahead with approving these, or if you need to wait and go through the files.
Um. Why don't we let you get through in your first selectman's briefing, then I'd like to add it to the agenda for more discussion.
Sounds good. Okay. And do I have anything else? No, we continue to work with the budget. Uh, it was, I think that the review that we had on Saturday was really good. A lot of good questions and a lot of good background information from the other selectmen. So I'm doing follow-ups on some of the questions that we had. And we'll get those, and so it becomes a matter of when do we wanna meet next? So we need to have the budget book together with the original submissions. And the, um, for you to do that. So I don't know if you wanna try and go for next Saturday?
I think we said next Saturday, or was that?
Yeah, yeah.
That was next Saturday at nine.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be quite as long as this last one, but.
I'm trying to make sure I see that, but now you gotta look at them and go, what do we think?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I'll. I don't know if you need a motion for that.
No, we don't, I don't, we don't. Uh, and that's all I have.
Did you want to talk about the roof?
Oh, let me, yeah, talk about the roof, thank you.
The other roof.
Yeah, the, uh, fire department roof. So. Definitely leaking, definitely had a fixture come down, we're lucky it didn't hit a truck or a person. And the, uh, it looks like, if I understand correctly, the solar company came out, did some patching a few weeks back. I don't know how well that's holding, that's for the work that they needed to fix of theirs. And then, um, there are some other holes as well that were probably put, I don't know if they were put in at the time they put up the, um. Solar or not, but where they missed the beams, the, uh, trusses. And so you have the nail holes and water can go through those. Uh, we're having a roofing company, uh, actually, there's, um, they're coming out on Friday, right?
Yes.
Friday?
New, um, McClintock is coming out.
They're gonna take a look at it, we already talked with our building official. Uh, about it, and, you know, to whether he wanted to go up and look, and he said, actually, it'd be better if the roofing company took a look at it. And gave some kind of indication of what needs to be fixed.
So the solar company also sent out an independent, um. Company, I'll get to the man, J P Kel Roofing out of Bloomfield. Um. I'm waiting, he was here, he was out there on. Friday.
How do you know they're independent, if this is a solar company?
Independent and said, they sent out a roofing company and not, not their.
Their, their guys.
Their contractor.
I'm glad we're actually gonna.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 um, so he was out there Friday, um, and he went up and he was, he's, I asked him to send me a report. Um, so far, I've gotten is an email, I'm waiting for the report, cause I was gonna forward it to the selectman's office, but it's, this is just all he said was, I was here. You know, I spent some time in the attic and, and walked on the roof and here's, there's some, uh, associated, there are a couple leaks associated with the solar crannies. Uh, the rest of the leaks I found were on the other side of the roof, which is the north side, um, shingles were showing signs of age. There was moss, and there's a, if anybody, if you know that roof, there is a valley in it where the two peaks, the, the large section of the building and the living area come together. I assume that's where the moss is, cause I can't see it from the ground.
Where we had the drifting issues?
Yes.
Um, how many years are on that roof? Wait, how many?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Is it twenty years?
Twenty years.
Geez, I'm sorry, you said it's twenty years on the roof, that's the guarantee?
Almost, no, no, no.
I thought we didn't build the, I thought we built the building sixteen, seventeen years ago.
Going on nineteen years old, so twenty years.
Really?
Two thousand and.
I think I said sixteen or seventeen.
Boy, the time flies.
I think the fund, the dedication was two thousand and five, if I remember.
When was this building dedicated or finished?
I don't know.
We moved in in August, two thousand six, I think.
Six.
So, a- and he said, after approximately twenty years, um, so he did send me some pictures. But I can't share them because they're in some kind of locked file thing, so I'm gonna touch base with him. Uh, he said it would be a week or so before he gets a report out. So hopefully we get a report from him and then we can compare it to what McClintock says, I'm very curious to see what the two said.
Exactly.
Um, and then I also told him to, if he was interested in their, their job, to send a separate proposal. For what his estimate was, cause we're gonna need some anyway, we're not just gonna pick one.
So, so let me ask this, do we need an RFP for this one?
If somebody, if whoever we're looking at is on the state bid list.
You don't.
We don't have to go out.
Do we know who McClintock is?
I don't know.
I think he is, but we have to check.
Name's very familiar.
Paul, I'd ask, yeah, I was gonna say, McClintock is gonna be hot, but his reviews are very, very good. So go ahead, Bill.
Um, I'd ask Catherine, and the contract that we signed with the solar company, does it give us any recourse? Against them in this sort of scenario, I mean.
Um. Uh, not that I can really see, but.
Has, has town council? Has town council taken a look at that?
If you'll send it to me, I'll send it off to town council.
It was done through the green bank.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't remember what there is for.
So, you know, I have all, what? I thought I had. Everything, but I have, why does it not say? Let me do it this way.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're still getting our ducks in a row to be able to send the information off to town council.
Good.
Anything else on the roof?
Uh, man, we're just, like you said, we're trying to get all our stuff together and then we can figure out what direction to take.
And it is on the capital improvement list.
Yes.
But we don't have an estimate, you just say we're trying to get something.
Just for quick conversation purposes, there are a number of different materials being used for roofing now.
Yep.
From metal roofing to, I'm wondering if it turns out we're gonna end up looking at a complete roof job? Whether we oughta look into alternatives? As well as perhaps some insulation of that building?
There's no insulation?
Oh, no, it's insulated, the attic's insulated very well.
It, even in the, where the, the large trusses are?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ceiling is insulated, not the, not, you can't actually insulate a roof, you insulate the ceiling, yes, it's actually very. There's a combination of that, that and woolen or whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Never stopped, yeah.
Okay.
That actually was one of the comments the gentleman made, he's like, that thing's insulated really good, I'm like, well, I hope so.
Cause I didn't have that impression.
Okay, uh, so that's my selectman's update, do you have any questions or things you'd like me to follow up on?
I have a question regarding a matter we discussed briefly at our January sixteenth meeting.
Yes.
About the policy regarding the food bank. And the check coming in, I think you were gonna draw something up or whatever.
I, uh, I haven't drawn it up, but we, in some ways, we've kind of started a little bit of that. Which is anybody who is renting the hall, I mean, the, the buildings with fifty dollars that has to pay. Um, that check is made out to the town of Ashford.
Okay.
And the process, I've been waiting for, uh, Melissa to come back, she had COVID. So, uh, because I need to talk with Melissa again, and those monies can go into her department. To be dispersed appropriately for social services. She has the best sense of who is in need in town. She's where if the money, if she wanted to take the money over and give it over to the church, at least it would have been tracked by the town appropriately. And look at her eyes, you're not happy with that, I think. So that's what we're looking at, did you have another idea?
Well, the whole concept came up. About, about this was hopefully we were gaining two advantages, one, we'd get a better bang for the buck. In getting food for the food bank.
Correct.
And the other was recognizing that the food bank is under pressure and getting a lot more stress. On clients than they have in the past. In my mind, this would help enhance their resources to do that. Um, I've done a little research since we had that conversation and everything.
Okay.
They have roughly eighty clients a month right now. Uh, taking advantage of the program, each client fits two full boxes.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, they have an arrangement which I was pleasantly surprised to hear with Big Y and I believe they mentioned two other. Large, uh, grocery stores, I'm not sure. Um, where they. Upon expiration of meats that are in their, their cabinets and that. They freeze dry all of them.
Or freeze them, not freeze drying.
They freeze them, yeah, and, and disperse those to the different similar food banks. So it's not only canned goods these people get, but it's that sort of thing also, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was just canned goods and non-perishables, but in any case, um. What I don't wanna do is, and I, we had moved on a policy that we were gonna do, and I know you're proposing to do something different now. But what I'm hoping we don't do is end up giving the food bank less than we're giving them now.
Well, here's, here's.
And I have complete confidence in Melissa, I, I know.
Oh, I know, I know that.
Yeah.
Um. The problem is, is. You know, what was raised was about people having to write a check to a church. Literally, that food bank is run by a church. And that was brought up January second. Okay, the information went out. And, and the person showed up January second in the office and raised that issue, which was. An interesting issue, because she said you're forcing people to donate to the church. So, if, if the monies were to go to Melissa. And the other thing was that we were not tracking the monies. That they would just, they'd be writing a check, giving it to us, we'd be giving it to the church.
Well, it should be tracked and wasn't.
It should be tracked.
That's like that eight hundred dollars of food in there.
Which is in there and we don't know.
That was ridiculous.
Why it hasn't gone anywhere, and I would like all of that money to go to the food bank, cause that, that was its intent.
Yep.
And we can, we can make that decision to do that. When it comes to this, I think there's nothing that prevents Melissa, okay, we're tracking the money, if it comes in, written to the town of Ashford. It goes in through her, her channel, if you will, and she can donate to the church. That is, in a sense, almost like her prerogative, um, because she also supports the food bank. So she also buys Big Y cards for people. What she may not know is about this arrangement that the food bank has with Big Y. And so when she, I think she might have come back today.
I think the other, one of the others was stopping shop, and I know Big Y was my.
Stop a shop?
I, I'm pretty sure it was stopping shop.
So, uh.
Which surprised me.
But all of this was to be.
I had concerns of that food being thrown out.
All of this was to be about food, okay, food for people who need it. So let me talk with Melissa some more, cause I had. So let me talk with Melissa some more, because I had only approached her the once. And, uh, to see if, you know, what the process was that she follows, and also I talked with finance department about their process. And that's how we uncovered that eight hundred dollar account.
Didn't, didn't we have, I, I remember part of the conversation, part of the conversation that stated something to the effect that. That there was a, a one way of doing it, and then there was another way of doing it that was far more efficient. It really was able to get more money. Which way was that?
The way, the way we had done it for a number of years was somebody, Joe Blow would call, say, I'd like to use the hall. And it only, at the time, we spread it to the senior center.
Oh, when they brought the food.
Say, well, if you donate a box of. So then myself or Chris or somebody else would walk it over to the church. And I just noticed there were several times that I brought stuff, maybe there was ten or fifteen dollars worth of food in there. And then I was talking to a member or so that's been involved for years, and they said, you know, well, we really appreciate that, and then we'll take everything we can get. If we got the money for it, we get a much better bang for the dollar, because. Three times as much food, if they buy it through the.
So now, if I can just say, I donated, I think I donated five hundred dollars to the food bank during COVID some period. And the way I did it, I went online to the church's site. And it said, you know, talk about what they have there, and you donate, you, you donate right online. But you have to send an email saying, I want my donation to go to the food bank, and I never got a receipt. So the process, um, and this is what this person did, she went out there to look, to donate, and then she went, wait a minute. Then she said, do they have separate accounts for the food bank versus the church? She was asking very good. Accounting questions. And then the issue came up with, how are we tracking the money? Because it's, you know, we're, it's for the use of the town buildings, therefore it should go through a process where we're tracking it. And getting it out there. So let me work with Melissa. See what we can come up with. This is not to deprive the food bank, because it's very important in the town. Okay, it's, it's just to find a way to make sure we're tracking the money and it's getting there. And by the way, Melissa always gives a receipt.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure we're not the only town that has this sort of informal setup or whatever. Perhaps check with the auditors. And just say, tell them the idea that you have. And, and, and is this agreeable? I mean, first of all, we, we had one, one anonymous person come in who had concerns. And I think it's reasonable, we look into it. I think that's one thing, the other thing is, you know, I wanna make sure it meets legal muster. The way we, we have been doing it in the past, as compared to what we're considering doing. But I think what we oughta do is formalize a policy, and the board will revisit it, we'll vote on it as a policy.
Got it.
And then everybody, one hand knows what the other's doing.
So there's one other thing that's come up, I'll be having some discussions with, I've already had one. We have events that are sponsored there by different groups, okay, so we have, well, the farmer's market. Only a few of the people who are vendors at the farmer's market are from Ashford. So, this is profiting them, you know, whoever the vendors are. Great, it's great to have it available here and everything, especially during the winter kind of thing, however. The vendors, the farmers themselves, who are from other places, are getting money through this, our venue. Another one, uh, for example, the arts council. The arts council has, they've got their regular meetings and they have their events, like their fundraiser. Yeah, that's one, that's one of those, definitely. But they also have, they, they have vendors come in, artist vendors, uh. Or writers or whatever, and they have them come in and they're selling their wares, just like the other. And I guess in the good old days, what used to happen is a collection was taken up. Maybe that, I'm gonna be talking with two people from the arts council, hopefully tomorrow, to talk with them about this, because. They may be charging for tables, and if they up the price of the tables a bit, and they give us the difference. Then it would be the more than fifty dollars that we're asking, you know, for. Again, these are, those kinds of events are profiting people who are from outside of town.
That aren't taxpayers.
Right, yeah, not in our tax base, they're using our building that we have to pay for through our tax base. So I'd really like us to also look at, and I'll try and see if we can document something up. Um, something where that's a different arrangement. Okay, and that we have more money coming out through that.
Perhaps we have to come up with a definition of a resident function. Like Mary Smith has a birthday party, which we run into a lot. Or it's a sort of a commercial venture.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Because, as you're talking about that, I'm wondering in my mind, if, if. Whether it be the food, the, uh, farmer's market, whatever, is a commercial visit. Does our umbrella liability coverage cover that? We know it covers all town functions, but where, where's the, where's the line drawn to define the difference?
So apparently, we also don't have, I'm gonna call it a mini contract, that we have people sign. So there was some confusion, someone did hold a big birthday party there. With a lot of kids, it was a dance, so things were prepared and they danced. And a lot of dirt and salt and stuff was tracked in, which is kind of unavoidable. We, uh, Chris is actually looking at what we can put there for a runner, going from the front of the foyer. Into, you know, where the hall is itself, to, especially during this kind of weather. So they're not tracking things in there.
You could rent those. We used to rent them for our buildings with the state.
Cheap ones at Ocean State.
Well, I was gonna say, the, the firms that rent these, they come in, they take up the old ones, they put down new ones. They do it on, with our state buildings, we used to do it every twenty, uh, thirty days or so. But you could go out and buy them yourself.
Thank you, thank you for the idea, what we'll do is we'll look at what looks like it's good. Now, actually, to prevent them tracking, but what these people didn't do. They cleaned up in the hall, they swept it and everything, but they left their trash. In the foyer, two big bags of it, they left trash in the ladies' room and men's room, and they never cleaned up in there. And so I actually, it's funny, because I didn't go and check, the person came to pick up, it happened on a Sunday, came to pick up the deposit on Monday. And I gave the deposit back to the person. My mistake, I was thinking I'd have to go check every time, like, you know, kind of thinking people are on their honor kind of thing. So I brought it up to them, because what I had to do was have a cleaning crew come in, cleaning company. Come in and take care of the bathrooms in particular. And the, uh, and als- and also the people didn't, apparently didn't realize that there were cleaning supplies there. We always need to make sure that we have cleaning supplies, and in fact, we put something in the budget to make sure that we have them there. The persons, when I called the wife, who was the one who, uh, the husband had brought the check in, or took the check home. When I talked to the wife, I said, you know, you guys didn't do a very good job of cleaning up, there was trash, whatever. And they said, we didn't know that we had to get rid of the trash ourselves, and we didn't know we had to clean up and restock the bathroom. And, uh, so what I really think we need is for all three buildings.
An agreement.
Some kind of an agreement that says for this building, for this building, for this building, simple. And that, with that comes the liability thing and, and all of that. So that's something where I wanted to, uh, talk to town council and see if they have any samples. That we can work on.
I'm sure they will.
And by the way, we're not charging as much as other towns for the use of these buildings, and guess who told me that?
Fifty dollars is a part.
They work there too, yeah, and so.
I mean, we may wanna revisit that in a year or so.
Yeah, in a year or so, but for the residents, and the other thing too, is we make sure that it's a resident who is renting it. If there is like an event planner from someplace else or whatever. Uh, even if there's an event planner from here, it's the person who the party is for. Whatever arrangement they've got with the event planner is their business, their contract, but making sure that this is for people in our town.
I agree. That's all I am.
All right, so now we're down to new business. Boarding commission appointments, we still have a vacancy on the economic development commission. I actually thought we had more than that based upon talking with Margie Chady the other day, it sounded like they were down two or three.
Is, Margie, are we gonna become permanent chair?
They're down two, a regular and an alternate. No, that's wetlands, I'm sorry.
Yeah, economic development, I could have sworn she said that, that they are down two, but I don't know why. Inland wetlands were down one regular member, and then one vacant alternate member. And then zoning board appeals were still down one alternate member, and hopefully we can find people to fill these. What is good is, this is all of the ones that we are missing people on.
Put a poster on the wall tonight.
Yeah, you know what? Yeah, get involved with your town, you're, you're here for this.
I have somebody that might be interested in inland wetland.
In, in the wetlands?
Yeah, yeah, I suggested they contact Lenny, we'll see what happens.
Okay, I cannot remember if this went out to you. This was about the cotton tail, the next thing is act, discuss an act on the EEP res- request. To conduct New England Cotton Tail survey on Cattle Rock.
First I saw was on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, can I read something to you? I'm sorry that I, uh, didn't send it out. This is from Will Cassidy, wildlife biologist, wildlife life division. Bureau of Natural Resources, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So it's not some Joe Schmo. Says, good afternoon, I'm reaching out as I'm looking for permission for myself and my technicians to access the former Cattle Rock properties. In a statewide effort to document unknown populations of New England Cotton Tail, also called NEC. And snowshoe hare. New England Cotton Tail, the state's.
Have any snowshoe here, but we do have New England Cotton Tail species.
New England Cotton Tail, the state's only native rabbit.
Are you sure the, the, it's not with the platypus?
I'll have to check on the.
Are on a region-wide decline, and determining their extent in Connecticut is a critical aspect. Of effectively implementing conservation strategies. While these properties are outside of the focus areas we typically find NEC in. Multiple detections have been made outside focus areas in recent years. Confirmed snowshoe hare sightings, harvest and present, presence data. Is perhaps rarer than the New England Cotton Tail. While Connecticut and the other states are involved in research documenting snowshoe hare responses. To climate change, we are limited by our knowledge of their population dispersion, dispersion throughout the state. Both species utilize brushy habitat. Recent research suggests the cotton tail may prefer a component of invasive species. In the thicker brush that they tend to inhabit. This habitat appears based on aerial imagery and in my, and my regular commute past the properties to be present. So he's talking about it's in Cattle Rock. I'm thinking it's in my backyard. Especially the, uh. Invasive species. Fortunately, connect, collecting rabbit pellets for genetic analysis is a relatively convenient. And effective means of determining the presence or absence of both species, and what we are hoping to do. Um, over the course of a few hours, we walk transects. Through what appears to be the most likely inhabited areas and collect what pellets are found. We conduct this work all winter, typically ceasing surveys by the end of April. We do work under specific protocols for monitoring known NEC sites. So when weather conditions are not favorable, we will deviate to conduct exploratory sampling. To be straightforward, if given permission, unless specific, specific notification and coordination for visits are necessary. We could be on the property during any weekday between that permission and the end of April. Lab data is typically returned in October. Depending on conclusions reached, regular follow-up surveys may be called for, but there is no obligation. Of course, should you have stipulations about our visiting the property, we are happy to coordinate. If you have any questions, reach out, Will Cassidy.
They wanna pick up rabbit poop on Cattle Rock, I'm fine with that.
I, I have no problem, it's just a couple of things, being a bit familiar with what they're doing. They have a liability release form. For the state will issue, releasing us from any responsibility if they get hurt. Or if somebody hurts them on our property. I'd make sure that we got the proper forms.
Proper forms, and also make sure that we've set up what the schedule is.
Yeah, and do they identify? When they're gonna be, I mean, do they put it, I'm wondering if they have a truck that they have. I know we, we don't allow any hunting, but we also have no trespassing signs all over the property. How did we differentiate between the guy that's in there from Wellington trying to hunt, and these guys trying to pick up rabbit crap?
So here's one thought. I'm lucky I got through it without laughing, especially with you characters up ahead. One thing, it might be a little cumbersome for them, but certainly would let us know, is that any day they're gonna go on the property, they come here. And.
Or, or at least call, maybe call DPW. Well, whether they answer.
Yeah, well, DPW is not gonna be the ones that's gonna give them.
I'm just thinking, it would be nice if we had the luxury to know. These fellows are gonna be there today and tomorrow and Wednesday.
If somebody is saying, you know, hey.
So, I, I don't think there'd be any, there shouldn't be any issue with them contacting us. And saying, okay, uh, we're looking to be out there this week. Okay, uh, our truck looks like this, send us a picture of the truck. Make sure Public Works has it.
Yeah, park the front.
With a rabbit on it?
Although, there's a, they, I, I was gonna say, we had a problem with. Our, um, the little piece across, the twelve acres across the street from me, they do some wood survey on. And a couple times, there was a truck parked out there and we didn't know who it was. So now, I did ask them, when you come over here. Put, either put something on, have a truck that's marked, or put something in the window that says, hi, my name is Paul, so I'm with. Connecticut D V E P forestry or forestry management, because otherwise. We don't know who you are and if you're supposed to be here.
All right, so a picture of, uh, whoever.
Something identifying. The vehicle or the, that they'll be in.
Identifying the person, all they have to do is send a picture of the person, the person's name. And also what their phone number is.
Emergency numbers. God forbid somebody gets hurt or falls into a hole or whatever. We just don't need the liability or exposure.
Thank you for telling me about the liability releases from the state. That, that would be awesome, because I was trying to figure out how we would document something up like that.
And this might also be a form that Duncan or his group would have.
I'll ask Duncan about it. To see if we've got something simple we can do. Issue plan, thank you for getting to us. Okay, so, uh, if I understand correctly, what we're really saying is. Tending, getting the liability release from the state, and them satisfying the identifications. That we want to have, and them providing us with the dates that they're going to be on the property, that you're in favor.
I'll make a motion to approve DP's proposal regarding the study. That they are recommending, with two conditions. One, that we are given advance notice of their people being on the property. And two, identifying factors for their vehicle and or personnel when they're actually there.
And three, I'm gonna say.
And the release.
And the release, okay, liability release.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any more discussion on that? Any more, any more jokes? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Another one down, good. All right, review request to optional transportation hours. I didn't bring all the detail. Contract, the union contract disagrees with current. Transportation practices.
I read up on that after our last meeting.
The, uh, so, they're not in alignment with that, that was something that happened. That was something that happened before Casey came on board as our director. And uh. The, and I think if I recall in our previous conversation. It was uh a concern about any of the machinery that they they're looking to only work a half an hour after, before hours, before the. Uh, public hours and half an hour after. And that's only on, again, Sun- Saturday, Sunday, and Wednesday, which is when the transfer station is open. The union contract talks basically about Monday and four hours being put in there. But what they've been doing apparently, and I don't know how well they've adhered to this, to be quite candid, is working, for example, on Sundays. It closes at four and they are open, they, the guys are working an hour beforehand. And two hours afterwards, and they don't have enough to do. So if I recall from conversations, and I think it was Bill, you brought it up. Is we don't want them running the heavy machinery that they would be running to move things around after hours. We don't want them doing that up on top. Uh, you know, once uh they already use uh, I forgot what it's called, it looks like.
The loader.
The loader, uh during, on the lower level, while people are there because they're tamping down things. And moving and moving some of the the bins out. The uh, but we wanna make sure that the one, the public is safe. If they have to do anything they would normally do, and the reality is they're supposed to be focusing on the public while they're there. So that's something I'd like to have a further discussion with Casey on. Uh.
Yeah, I have some thoughts.
The loader be up top anyway.
It is much too much.
I believe that loader came up screaming after me.
I know, but there's no reason, other than we're moving the brush.
But that's not.
Brush pile.
The topic.
The only reason it's up there is a matter of convenience for the operator, but. Did you have a chance to look at the form that we signed off on operation that loader?
No, you guys had a.
We talked about it. Form because we were concerned about the operation of that loader.
Right.
And we signed it, we, I, Joe Kalanowski signed it, I signed it, and Tony uh signed it. Uh, to clarify everybody.
No, no, we had the discussion as to whether or not it was in his file.
What happens to me is if I don't see it, I don't remember it.
It should be probably.
Probably in Tony's file.
Tony's file, because we had concerns about the machine being left on all day. We had concerns about it being driven too fast, particularly in public areas. About it being up top and left up top, I mean, so we defined even how high he could have that bucket.
Well, that's because that's how the window she windshield got broken. Thank you, I didn't know we had that.
Okay, can I ask one question to this?
Yeah.
Sunday. Between Saturday and Sunday, I don't know how many dumpsters they fill, but pickup is on Monday. They pick up the dumpsters, so. Giving them a half hour after the transfer station closes on Sunday. Is that enough time to get the dumpsters ready to pick up on Monday?
Good point, maybe as we look at this, we may wanna say, no, it's an hour after, or stay there an hour after on Sunday.
Because they're dealing with not so heavy, they're dealing with too heavy garbage, it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
My my thoughts on this item on the agenda, Catherine, is to push it off to another meeting or two.
Right.
Charlie is going in Wednesday for his operation.
Yeah.
We're gonna have some temporary situations up there.
Right.
I think we had to hold off without making any major changes.
Collect, collect information.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um.
I did some follow up on before, because I got some complaints about after hours hours and prior hours and. They weren't jiving with what was in the contract at all.
Right, and actually, I've taken two, driving around, I'm sure you do same. Of course, they always, they hate to see me coming.
Well, they hate to see me too, but.
And uh. Okay, that's for, that's for, thank you.
You know, those are things I think we can address, and we can pick it up with our union representative and look at.
And we and we will.
Mine and get something signed.
We'll have to, because it's.
There's gotta be a lot of.
Different than the.
Yeah, yeah.
The uh, was it in the purpose? Yes, and it needs to be laid out in a chart that you can look at, so it's documented.
Yeah.
Not only that, we have to change the information on our website, and we've got handouts that we give people that may or may not be up to date at this point.
They're not.
So we should probably.
I mean, they still still show the sheds being up, not major things, but.
But in terms of. The one thing that was good about what they're proposing is that the public would have four more hours during the week.
No, I like the concept, I just.
And again, I wanna stress making sure that our dump committee is involved in these.
Yeah, the transfer station committee.
And.
We don't have that problem.
Well, that's what I do. Well, no, we do. Somebody else does. Yeah, I dump it, they transfer it.
I'll find out when, do we, uh, transfer station committee meetings, they're not regular.
They don't have a regular meeting, it's pretty much at the call of the first selectman.
Or as needed.
Or their chairman.
So I I think what I'm gonna do is I'm going to uh put the information together.
Yeah.
Call a transfer station committee meeting.
Yeah.
So that they can look at it and go, you know, they've been working with us for years.
Yeah.
Look at it and go, they really think that this is a viable solution.
No, I, like I said, we get the public involved in these things, it's important.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, they're not, they should not be closing the. Put and take early.
Or ending out, the frequency of how often that's empty out bothers me.
How often?
And it bothers my wife even more.
Is it too frequent?
Yes, it's too frequent. I I mean, we put stuff in there, and we've seen them three hours later throwing it away.
I have to say that the put and take, whenever Gary works. The put and take is very well organized, and he goes around through it.
Gary's, Gary's management up there is a little.
Remem- remember, when we brought Gary on, it was to work with that. So uh it was the right person.
Yeah.
Actually, the right person all around. Thank you.
That's not what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
I don't know, you just hit it, sorry, well, we don't need that, I don't know, I know. There.
Okay, all right.
Oh, and that was that.
Tax refund.
Tax refund. Ready?
Yep.
Um, Wanda, Wanda Fabian in the amount, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine cents. Timothy Reynolds in the amount of one hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents. Art Yankee, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents, yes, I know he's deceased. Art Yankee for five hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents. Art Yankee for a hundred and seventeen dollars and eighteen cents. Art Yankee for four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
See what you have to do to beat City Hall.
My goodness.
Casey Colburn in the amount of a hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. And Zoe Colburn in the amount of one ninety-five and seventy-three cents.
Some of, seconded, citing this statute.
Yep.
Agenda items for upcoming meetings?
Uh.
How do we want to um, how do we want to bring in departments? Before the board of selectmen, do we want working sessions that are during the day? Because the departments are here.
I think it's during the day when the people here.
I think so too.
Yeah, why don't we go with that Saturday?
Yeah, and I'm thinking working sessions, that they're not necessarily Zoom sessions.
I I don't know Roger's thought on it, but I'm only thinking of a few.
Yeah, me too.
You know, maybe the fire department, rec committee. Maybe the uh VAPC, I'm not even sure of that. Maybe Kit. We're also, and I know we've been a little lenient because of her medical situation off now, but. We used to get asked for quarterly reports from the senior center, I haven't seen one in a year.
Thank you. We also should be getting reports from the fire marshal, and we're not getting them.
We should, by statute, isn't it, Paul?
It is by statute. And I think they're monthly.
I believe, believe them, I believe monthly.
So I am going to pursue that, I was just, uh, it was kinda sort of on the back burner, and I wasn't. Necessarily looking forward to it, so. Um, I think if there's anything else, uh, certainly budget. We have a capital improvement meeting tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, at six. That um, you've got the agenda, the, I sent you the agendas in the packets.
Is that gonna be a a Zoom meeting?
No.
In person?
In person.
I will not.
Uh, actually.
So you can, I can call and that's fine.
Um, actually.
It's up to you.
We already sent the agenda out, right?
I'm gonna send it tomorrow.
Can we make it hybrid, I'll hold it down here, I'll make it Zoom, just be here in person? As long as nobody will.
Yeah, it's on the top.
This room, so I have.
Well, he can Zoom in.
Well, sorry.
Hybrid. Hybrid, yeah, hybrid.
But that way, it's a participating, I want you to participate.
I know Zoom costs us every time we do it, is there a way to do it on Teams instead of Zoom?
We've found, for example, we tried to use Teams.
Teams is free, right?
For Jim Rupert to participate, and he could not get into a Teams meeting that we had. But we had it with town, with the.
We're still bad in the corner, but Teams is terrible. And I don't know if, you know, yet being able to put it on to.
And the Zoom meetings, uh, actually.
The price is right on Teams.
Actually, uh, I started gathering some information on what is possible is to do the Zoom meetings, because we need to have that in our budget.
It's a hundred and fifty a piece, I believe.
I don't know for sure. Uh.
Unless it goes over.
What I did was I asked Laura, I said, how much are, you know, how much in terms of Zoom this year so far? And it was a couple thousand, it wasn't as much as I thought it was gonna be.
Are the capital improvement meetings, public meetings?
Anybody can come to one of our meetings.
Right, right, but I mean, like, do they need to be?
That's questionable, I mean, I I think of the Zoom more as a convenience for its members.
It's a regular meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, because like, for instance, in that case, like, I have a, you can have a personal Zoom account, like.
You can have a what?
You can have a, I got a personal Zoom account, so you wouldn't have to use the towns and.
Well, I have one too.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is that I know the town's paying and I don't wanna, but I didn't know if they were, they were.
No, no, you, we should, we should not be using anybody's personal account for town business.
Is it, is a capital improvement meeting like a budget working session?
Hmm, yes, that's your main recommendation.
I believe it is, and it's an ad hoc committee.
It's just a.
I mean, they don't file like annual meetings or or, well, no, it's an advisory committee to the board of selectmen, basically.
Yeah.
So I don't, maybe that's a legal question.
We do, we do file, we file agendas.
Agenda.
Yes, we could file it, but I mean, I don't think.
Does it need to be recorded? Well, my my thing is, is that if we're, if, you know, I wanna make it so that all the people should be there. And if you're getting, can participate.
And then if somebody from the public does, I mean, they're open meetings, so.
It is, it's awkward when we're making sausage in front of the pu- public, you know. Because a lot of times the public will grab onto something that is not really a reality at that point. It's not till we get to our final decision making that it becomes real. So, um, yes, that's awkward. Right now, I think because of the situation. Where I don't think you're the only one who would have to attend, in fact, it might be that Jim Rupert might wish to attend. He's not on that committee, but he could be a voice uh talking with us, we can ask him questions. So.
He said Wednesday at six.
Yeah, Wednesday at six, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks for your help.
Thanks for the phone call.